Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. This is the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, April 3rd. Our inspirational word, Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. And we have our dog this morning.
This is kennel number two. They nicknamed her Gert. We picked her up about two weeks ago. Very friendly. She's like a boxer, Boston Terrier mix. Very friendly. Those ears not only look good, but they're fully functional. She gets all HD channels and satellite radio. So come on down and see her, okay? We have seventeen other dogs.
Tim, we gotta have a bigger crowd more often. You're a rarefied.
Wow. There's a whole routine work out there.
We have a proclamation for David K. Root, State Commander, VFW Department of Ohio.
Good morning, State Commander. If you'd like to come up to one of the podiums, maybe the one that's closest over there to you. This board wanted to recognize you for your, not just the service to your country, which we thank you for, but your service to the state as the State Commander. We are very proud to have one of our own as the State Commander and have known David for some time, always very active in the veterans community and the community in general. But we have a proclamation for you here this morning. I'll just read portions of it. Whereas David earned his eligibility in the VFW while serving in the United States Navy from April 1966 to January 1970. He obtained the rank of Aviation Ordinance Man, Second Class, and made three cruises to Vietnam. Also earned the Navy Unit Combination with Two Bronze Stars, National Defense Service Medal, Armed Forces Expeditionary Medal, Vietnam Service Medal with One Silver and One Bronze Campaign Star, the Vietnam Cross of Gallantry, and Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal. You were also appointed National Deputy Chief of Staff two times and served on the National Resolutions Committee twice. You're a founding member of the Honor Flight Cleveland in 2007. Boy, what a great operation that is. You've also been very involved in the community as a leader camp host and leader trainer of Girl Scouts of Northeast Ohio Council for twenty-five years and a life member. You also served as a Boy Scout leader for the past thirty years. You're a member of the Ohio VFW Past Commander Association, a life member of the VFW National Home for Children, Military Order, and a delegate to the Illyria Council of Veterans. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, our county is very proud to have one of its own serving as State Commander. We hereby honor David K. Root for his commitment, service, and unfailing dedication, this signed by all three of the Commissioners. If you'd like to say a few words just about the experience, I follow you on Facebook and I think you're, I think you've been to pretty much every county in the state, it seems like.
I believe I have. I think I've hit all eighty-eight of them, at least driving through if not stopping and visiting people. It's been, it's a year's term of office and I'll be up, it'll end in June, middle of June, but it's been a great year so far. I've really enjoyed traveling, meeting other people, helping them there with their issues and their locations and basically serving the veteran population in our entire state. I've been able to meet a whole lot of interesting people, people that are, believe it or not, after listening to all that you've just read, people doing a lot more than I ever have and ever will. It's just, this state is full of amazing people and it's been a pleasure, it's been an honor, and I will not ever forget this entire year and I appreciate what you've been doing for the veterans also. Matt, I know you've probably been to our post more often than I have over the years. Every time we have anything and you get a letter, you're there and we appreciate that very much. We cannot survive in the community without the support of the community and its leaders and we do appreciate everything that you do for us.
Thank you. It's a good group of folks over there and, you know, and I always talk about how, you know, all the members have served their country and then they come back to the community and they continue to serve and then the outreach that a lot of the members do to the new military families who are going through the new military experience and having loved ones away and sometimes needing help and assistance on things. And I know VFW 1079, that's the largest VFW post in the state, right? Is it still the largest?
Yes, it is. At this point, it still is. We have a couple of that are trying to take us away from that lofty position, but haven't yet, so.
Okay. But I know the post just does a great, great job for the community and we appreciate all that you do and I see a lot of your colleagues here today who are very appreciative and we support them for, and thank them for everything they do for the community as well. So we'd like to come down and...
Were you on aircraft carrier in Vietnam?
I'm sorry?
Aircraft carrier service?
Yes, I was.
Which one?
The first two cruises were, well, first cruise was on the Kitty Hawk, second on the America, and the third on the Kitty Hawk again.
I was on the Forest Doll, so the...
When were you on the Forest Doll, sir?
Right after Vietnam. I did two tours on the Forest Doll, but I know the Kitty Hawk well, so yeah, congratulations on serving there. It was a dangerous time, dangerous place. I was not on the Forest Doll when she imploded in Vietnam, so, but it was up on the flight deck was a very, very dangerous place. Congratulations on picking, not, every service is great, but the Navy's the best.
I knew that was coming.
I agree, the flight deck is the greatest place.
Ships of steel and men of steel, so.
You just had to get that in there.
Got to get that in there.
Absolutely. Well, we're going to come down and present this to you, Commander. Terry, could you come up and introduce some of the members of our Veteran Services Commission? And we're always trying to get the word out about our Veteran Services Commission and the amazing services that they provide for our veterans in the county and so if you could...
Steve, don't you want to come up?
Yeah, introduce some of your members that are here and tell us about the programming. Right. Oh, new members, right.
Yeah, we've got a new member too, which I'll introduce. Thank you for having me come up. I'm Terry Stone. I'm the Director of the Veteran Service Commission here in the county. We have some of our Commissioners here with us today. I'd like them to at least stand up or come up front here so I can introduce them.
I've never known these guys to be shy. Come on now. Especially Bancek and Jose, yeah.
Jose had a special outfit on this last weekend, too.
Yeah. Oh, you saw, you saw the Facebook page, yeah.
Yes.
The young gentleman here that looks like he came from Homerville is Jose Torres. He's our current President of the Veteran Service Commission Board. And pretty soon he'll be in the same position that Dave Root is right now, in a few years. Yeah. Next is Mr. Steve Bancek. He's our, oh, Jose is with the Purple Heart. He's our Purple Heart Commissioner. Mr. Steve Bancek is our AMVETS Veteran Service Commissioner from Lorraine. You probably know him from his previous job as a pain in the butt with the clerk of courts.
Oh, my.
Sam Wolf is our newest Commissioner. Sam Batunis, who was our American Legion Commissioner, resigned a year early before his term was up due to some health reasons. So in Judge Uier's ultimate wisdom, he picked Mr. Sam Wolf from American Legion Post 12 as our new American Legion Commissioner. And he's doing a good job. Any of these gentlemen are just a phone call away. If you don't have their numbers, you can call me. I'll give you their numbers. You can call our office anytime you have any issues or questions about veteran services in the county. We're constantly looking and striving to get more and more involved, do more and more for the veterans of the community. We have our transportation network. I'm sure you see the vans all over the county as we bought a couple extras this past year and quite a few drivers. We take all the veterans to their VA medical appointments and the ones we can't handle, we contract through Life Care to do those for dialysis and stuff like that. Plus, our office also has financial assistance available to veterans that qualify and we have our four service officers that are duly qualified to help veterans file claims with the VA for pension, compensation, wartime injuries, any of those other benefits that the Veterans Administration has available to veterans. That's what the Veteran Service Officers in my office do, is help them through the paperwork and help them get that claim filed. Thank you very much, everybody. And if anybody needs any cards or anything, it looks like Jose's going to grab his and hand them out.
So I just wanted to say, if you know any veterans, make sure to get down to Judy Nettie's office down on the first floor, record their DD-214s so they can get the state identification card, the official one with the seal on the back. That way we can try to track to see how many veterans are actually in our county and the only way we can do it is if they get down to her office and record their DD-214s. Then if they have a house fire, something happens, it's still here, so they don't have to worry about trying to get it again.
Nice.
I'd like to clarify one thing if I can, too, because it seems that the conception out there is that if a veteran passes, and God forbid you should, that the spouse is left with nothing. That is not accurate.
We're going to have to, Steve, we're going to give you a microphone, sorry. Or if you can speak at the podium.
Jose didn't need one.
Yeah.
I didn't think I needed one.
Jose never needed one.
As I mentioned earlier, just a bit ago, there's some inadequacies out there where people think that if the veteran passes, that the spouse is not entitled. That is absolutely not correct. As long as that spouse meets the qualifications, continuing benefits are available. And so just do not believe that if the veteran passes, that you're left alone. Come and see us to make sure, because there are other means that we can send you to if we can't help you. Sam?
Hey, it was nice, it's a privilege being honored, being on this board and everything. Like he says, come to us for anything. You may get it, you may not, but if it's silly or whatever, just come to us, we'll be able to answer your question.
I'd like to take just one more moment if I can, Dave. I'm the National Treasurer for the Polish Legion of American Veterans. On behalf of our Commander and myself, I also would like to congratulate you for all you have done and will continue to do.
We're done. Yes. Remember, we're Lorraine County Veteran Service Office. We are not the VA, so if you hear people bad-mouthing the VA, please tell them it's not our office. Stay...
Oh, boy, did I say something.
Thank you, all of you, for your service to our country and to our ongoing service to our community. We have a couple presentations be coming up this morning, but what we'd like to do is see if we could jump down to item number ten and address that business first and then we'll come back to our presentations and the rest of the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Expedited one annexation for ninety-four point five three four nine acres of land in the township of Carlisle to the Village of Grafton, Agent James R. White petitioner for Kevin Flanagan.
So move.
Second.
And, okay, if you'll please come forward, just give us your name and...
Hi, I'm JR White, attorney with Fauber, the Fauber Law Firm, and I'm here on behalf of KNG and its managing member, Kevin Flanagan, since his regrets that he had a prior engagement out of town. This is expedited one, so I don't want to take up too much of the board's time, but I do appreciate the board's consideration. I'll tell you, your clerk is excellent and Zupkin is a great, great resource and a credit to the county. I'd like to thank also the Commissioners and engineer, Carney, and Mr. Ennis, who was helpful throughout this process as well. This was really a good example of two entities working together to achieve a result that made sense. So I'd like to thank the trustees of Township Carlisle, I'm a resident there, Grafton Village Council, Mayor DiVincenzo, Administrator Price, and the staff of both, as well as Law Director Holderman. Made me proud to be a resident of Carlisle with the Grafton mailing address and a wife that teaches at Midview High School, so go Middies. I'd be remiss if I didn't say, make a brief comment about the fire in Grafton two days ago. My client wishes to express his gratitude to the Grafton Fire Department, Carlisle, and what I read today, I think eleven different departments that responded to that fire, as well as other safety service people, local businesses that stepped in, elected officials and private community members. And that just shows in time of need, just as we work together to get this done, our county will also band together. And just one last thing, Administrator, you had mentioned your service on the Forest Doll. My father-in-law served on the Forest Doll as a very, very young man when it caught fire and he is always looking to connect with, you know, goes to these reunions and things like that. If he knew that I didn't mention him and give you a business card, not for me, on the back is his phone number, if you wish to contact him, he would, he's, you know, he's a tough military man.
It's always, it's always nice to talk to people that served on the Forest Doll. You know, we used to call it the FID, First in Defense, so I certainly would make a reach out. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service and thank you to the veterans again, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, do you want to explain expedited annexation, that we really just have to make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed and everything's in order and we really don't have a decision to make other than saying yes to it.
Right. The, I don't know, trustees from Carlisle want to say anything?
I was going to ask if anyone from Carlisle or Grafton had anything to say. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jared Smith. I'm a Carlisle Township trustee. During this process, we've had quality dialogue between the parties involved. It's been a, been a good thing and we wish, Township wishes Mr. Flanagan and the Village of Grafton the best of wishes on this project.
This is that property just north of Auburn Court, right?
It's actually south.
South of Auburn Court?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go to Sea and Navigate, but it can't get it right. It's south Auburn Court, so it's contiguous to the development they've already done on the other side there?
Correct.
Yeah, because it makes perfect sense. It's so nice to see people getting along over there, because we got the sewers down Auburn Court, but we don't have anything south there to finish that development beyond, south of Auburn Court.
Yeah, again, the project makes sense and we're a supporter of it.
Okay, thank you.
It's always good when the parties can get together and talk everything through and Jerry was going to explain how the legal process works.
As both parties have explained, this has been discussed and worked out amicably over a period of time and when you do have this annexation agreement, we really don't even have to have a hearing, it's but for public information, this board likes to have some kind of presentation so people know what's going on. As long as the paperwork is done correctly and there is an agreement and the engineer checks over the map and so forth, then it is just mandatory of the Board of Commissioners to go ahead and improve it. And again, I think all the parties recognize that this is something that will eventually benefit both communities and there is a methodology in which, over a period of years, taxes are still paid to Carlisle to reimburse them for the loss, so.
Good, well, it's refreshing, because normally these types of decisions, annexations, don't go so smoothly, but it's always nice when the leaders in the communities can work it out and everybody can come together on terms and these are the type of annexations we wish we had all the time, right?
That's right.
Call the roll.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
And now if we could, Madam Clerk, I'd like to go to Presentations.
Soil and Water. Will Schlechter?
Okay.
Bernie here. Yep.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Before I get started, I'd really like to thank all the veterans here, all the veterans. We couldn't be in a better crowd of people. I don't think you hear that enough. Veteran Service.
My name's Will Schlechter. I am the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors on the Soil and Water Conservation Board. This is Scott Nelson. He's our Urban Erosion Control and Stormwater Specialist. And John Schwartz, he is our District Technician and Outreach Specialist. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your support this past year. I believe, I believe it's made our partnership stronger. We've been able to add a person to our staff, which has been a great help. We've had a lot of communication. I'd like to thank Don. Don's been more than helpful. He's always had an open ear to us with your support. And I'd like to recognize that the board and staff is committed to keeping that partnership strong and thriving. We like to keep an open door to conversation, things in the future, you know, things that we can improve on, and other partnerships we can have with other entities to make, to make our county better. And I think that's going to be really important with, you know, the state coming out with the H2 Ohio program. We're still kind of waiting to see how that's going to look, so things may change, you know, with our needs in our office, depending on what programs are available and what we can implement. So with that, no further ado, I'd like to have John and Scott give their presentation of what we've been up to in the office and abroad through the Soil and Water.
Jim, can we switch over? We'll switch over for you to your presentation.
There you go. Technology works.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning.
So like Will said, we're Lorraine Soil and Water. My name's Scott. I'm the Urban Erosion and Stormwater Specialist.
I would just ask if you could maybe speak up just a little bit more or closer to the mic.
So our mission statement is to provide leadership and technical assistance to help people conserve, maintain, and improve the natural resources located in Lorraine County. We have permits to the MPDES Phase II program, which is designed to protect the natural resources of Lorraine County, the landowners of Lorraine County, and the infrastructure of Lorraine County. We do this by plan reviews, making sure that erosion sediment controls are where they need to be, and then also through site inspections where we go out and make sure that they're all functioning correctly and that everything's looking good. Sometimes that involves enforcement. And we also do parcel evaluations when people want to parcel out or separate their parcel of land to sell. Usually those involve soil reports, flood plain report, and wetland report. So we have one hundred and three active sites in 2018. Those involve construction or commercial properties, subdivisions, new homes, things like that. We made, we had nine thousand dollars in fees in 2018 and so far we've collected four thousand dollars. It's projected to be around thirteen thousand dollars if that trend continues. Also, as a resource, we provide soil reports just to help landowners make informed decisions and those are also part of the parcel evaluations. We're excited. We're working on a new website right now to help make things a little easier, provide hopefully more resources to landowners and more information. Hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll get that online and then I'll hand it over to John.
All right. Good morning, everybody. I'm John Schwartz. I'm the District Tech and Outreach Specialist, so I'm going to talk a little bit about what I do for the district as well as the staff. So part of my duties are implementing the drainage program and what that is, we provide landowner assistance to address stormwater management issues on their property. And then we offer suggestions such as installing a swale, a tile, things like that. Two common problems I come across are damaged drainage tile or a blocked outlet, as you can see up there, and the biggest problem I'm finding is the lack of a suitable outlet. At that point, landowners are only left with two things, that's percolation and evaporation. So far since starting with the district, in September, I've, the Blue Stars represent all the different cities and townships I've been able to service and with spring coming up, I'm sure that map's going to fill in real soon with the calls. We recently released a drainage guide for landowners and what it does is it answers the question of why our ground's so wet in Lorraine County. So it talks about our soils, legal issues with water management, as well as drainage Another program I'm involved in is the APAP program and it's administered through the Ohio Department of Agriculture and it's implemented by Soil and Waters. This is set up basically to reduce soil erosion and the pollution of our streams and my job is to go out and investigate these complaints. Most of the time, it's just a neighbor who's complaining about a smell, but if there is an illicit discharge that can cause a fish kill, then the EPA or Division of Wildlife is contacted. Very similar to the APAP program is the Forestry Pollution Abatement Program and we've recently got involved in this. And basically what this does is it protects waters of the state and also fosters this working relationship with the timber industry. So what landowners can do, they can file a timber harvest plan with our office to ensure that best management practices are put in place to reduce soil erosion. I have a background in forestry, so it's really good for me to be able to, you know, still take my past experience. Common violations is not installing water bars, failure to revegetate, you know, bare soil, and leaving large, woody debris in streams. The picture up there, that shows a pole crossing that a logger had left in place and ideally they're supposed to remove those and return the creek to its natural slope and grain. The district does hold conservation easements that are annually inspected and this is to ensure that they're abide by the contract and not any major land use changes. In our office is the Natural Resource Conservation Service and they provide lots of different things for farmers and producers, such as funding for grass waterways, waste storage facilities, but I'm able to go out there with them and identify and address resource concerns. And this, what this does is allows me to talk to farmers, build the relationship, and oftentimes these calls are drainage related, which NRCS does not handle. All right, so switching directions, some of the outreach programs that we do, so one thing we do to kind of, you know, highlight the beauty and the benefit of Lorraine County's largest trees, we do a big tree contest. County's largest trees, we do a big tree contest. Last year, we highlighted Tulip Poplar, James Clark from Grafton one, it was 140 inches in diameter. And this year, we selected the Eastern Cottonwood, which I'm really excited, because in Lorain County, poorly drained soils, cottonwoods grow really big. So we're excited to see, you know, all the entries for that. We have partnered with the Ohio Pollinator Habitat Initiative to collect and distribute milkweed pods. We collected over 175 gallons last year, which was a whole bunch, and distributed 175 seed packets. It's important, because, you know, over the last 20 years, there's been 80% decline in monarch butterfly populations. And that's mostly because, you know, milkweed is disappearing across the country. So it's our way of kind of giving back and hoping to restore those populations. I had the pleasure to present to a local Boy Scout group in attempts to help them get their Soil and Water Merit Badge. And part of the requirements was to learn about watersheds. So I talked to them about the Black River watershed, the Lake Erie watershed, the issues we're facing with sedimentation and siltation, in addition to harmful algae blooms. And then, an activity I had for them was teaching them how to delineate a watershed based on a topo map. And that really enforces that, you know, no matter where you're standing, there's a watershed beneath your feet, and it's our duty to kind of take care of that. Each year, we conduct a spring and fall fish sale. Last spring was our best year yet. And basically, we just provide an avenue for landowners to purchase, you know, sportfish to stock their ponds, or, you know, white amers for biological controls against, you know, lots of vegetation. In order to promote, you know, conservation and, you know, the planting of native species, we offer a seedling sale each year. And our 2019 sale is doing real well. We're pretty much sold out of everything. And, you know, I'm happy we were able to offer pawpaw this year, which is Ohio's state native fruit, and those just sold out real quick. So that was...
What is it?
Pawpaw, it's, yeah. About, I think about six years ago, it became our state fruit. And, you know, we sold out pretty much as soon as we listed this. One thing we do offer is the Joel McRoberts Memorial Scholarship, and he was a District Technician for 20 years at the office. And this is available to incoming freshmen and continuing education students that are involved in either a program for agriculture or natural resources. Each year, the district likes to highlight a cooperative year who goes above and beyond for conservation purposes, you know. This year, it was the Grove Family Farm. And, you know, the Grove family, they have, you know, integrated pest management, nutrient management plans, filter strips, cover crops. He really goes above and beyond. In addition, you know, he's been involved with the district since he was very young, and he actually helps us store our seedlings before the sale. So, yeah, he's done a lot for the district, and it was a pleasure to highlight, you know.
He was at last year's breakfast with a farmer, and he was talking about apples. And apples can last a year. Did you know that? I was like...
That was amazing.
I was so dumbfounded by that, like, a year. They last.
I have had his apples in there.
They're good. They're very good.
So another thing the staff is involved in is participating in Envirothon. And what this is, is a competition for high school students to basically show their knowledge in soil, wildlife, aquatic ecology, and different things like that. We had three schools last year participate, JVS, Wellington, and Keystone. And different counties take turns hosting this. And I think within the next few years, Lorain County's going to be hosting, and Scott and I are really, you know, excited to be involved in that, so. Also, the National Association of Conservation Districts, this is a nationwide outreach effort. They select a different stewardship's theme each year, and students, kindergarten through 12th grade, essentially make posters, you know, based on that. Watersheds, our water in our home was last year's theme. And we just reach out to schools and try to get as much involvement in that as we can. We do have a barn at the Lorain County Fair, where we facilitate, you know, vegetable and silage judging. There is a vegetable critter contest for kids, where essentially, they make these cool things, you know, different vegetables. And also, we host many different partner agencies in there, such as Division of Wildlife, OSU Extension, and the Natural Resource Conservation Service. So it's a great opportunity for us to meet lots of residents in Lorain County in a short amount of time. Scott and I have become more involved in the Neopipe Program, and that's the public education, public involvement. We distribute materials such as the Rain Garden Manual for landowners, and that's a quick and easy way for them to basically, you know, address stormwater on their property. We attend monthly meetings as we're able to go, and what that allows us to do is meet with these different professionals that have years and years' experience in outreach, and we can kind of, you know, lean on them for ideas and programming. We had the pleasure of hosting Dorothy Planda. She is the new ODA Director, and this was at Wellington Reservation. This was in conjunction with Huron and Erie County, in addition to the Farm Bureau. So this provided landowners an opportunity to express their concerns and also, you know, kind of get her plan that what she's going to do while serving as the Director.
I served with her in the legislature, and she's just a great lady. Very professional, very knowledgeable, and always, you know, worked on both sides of the aisle and had tremendous respect from both sides of the aisle. So she's going to do a good job for you.
And she's very approachable, you know, as well. So, you know, we all really enjoyed that event. Real quick, a couple upcoming events. I'll be hosting a Pond Management Clinic to help landowners, you know, basic pond maintenance, stocking rates, weed and algae control, things of that nature. And lastly, the Ohio Federation of Soil and Water Conservation Districts, each year they host something called a Summer Supervisor School, and this is held in Cuyahoga County this year. Well, you know, at the office, we really wanted to bring some of these supervisors into Lorain County and show the diversity that we have. So our plan is to start out about a 200-acre soy and corn bean farm operation that's organic. And he was a conventional farmer before. So it's the hope that, you know, if other producers are kind of scared to go that route, they can talk to him about the, you know, concerns he had and the benefits of it. Then from there, we're going to move to the north part of the county, to Avon Willoway Nursery. You know, they're a leader in the horticultural industry. And then finally, we're going to end at Miller Nature Preserve, so we can, you know, show them the conservatory and have lunch. So that was kind of our plan.
Now, when you get over to Willoway, I remember touring that when I was a state rep, and you're just blown away by how big it is. It's just huge.
Yeah, it's a big facility, yeah. We're really looking forward. So hopefully, we can figure out all the logistics and this tour can go through. And it should be about 50 supervisors from around the state that will be bused out there. Lastly, as Will touched on before, at our office, we're really focused on strengthening partnerships in addition to forming new ones. Conservation and natural resource goals, those can't be, in stormwater management, it can't happen from one office. It's a collaborative approach. So, you know, we're excited to strengthen these partnerships in addition to add me, so. You know, I appreciate you, you know, listening to me. I'm a lifelong Lorain County resident, and it was a pleasure being able to, you know, get up here and talk in front of everybody.
Thank you. You seem very passionate about what you're doing, so it's nice to see the energy.
Thank you.
A lot of good things coming up. That's good if we can get participation from throughout the county and to get our young folks engaged, which I see you're doing a lot of that.
Absolutely.
That's great.
Phil, you know, you saw them young, you know, you're kind of developing young conservationists.
I know our community development department really enjoys working closely with you, and we want that working partnership to continue. And I just think it's really important, and I can tell by your demeanor that you're the right person for the job, making the contacts and everything, because, you know, we want people to know that stormwater is a very serious issue, and it can have a big impact on your property and your agricultural business. And I think it's important for people to know and to feel that, you know, when you show up, you're there to work with them and help them. You're not there to be the big bad government, that you're actually there to work with them and help them. And, because it's so important, it all leads to, you know, the tributaries, and eventually makes its way to the lake, and we've got to do everything we can to keep our lake healthy.
Absolutely.
If I wanted to learn more about the rain garden, can I just go to your website and...
Yes, absolutely. And if you want one of those manuals, those manuals are expensive, so we hold them kind of close, but we can absolutely get one too, if you'd like to.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John and Scott. As you can see, our office, it's been an exciting year, and it's all because of your support. And we really look forward to the future. It's been a big turnaround. I mean, five years ago was, you know, it was kind of bleak, but I'm really excited. Glad I stuck it out.
Yeah, absolutely, too.
Good work.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Do you guys have any further questions or comments or anything?
I know that you've made a request here that we'll need to review and consider by the end of the month.
What was the request?
We requested $95,000, the same as last year.
You know, Commissioner, I can tell you that for some reason, we did not transfer stormwater money into the general fund last year. Yeah, I'm just looking over, excuse me, give me a second here. I try to multitask myself right out of... How much?
This is a page here, Jim.
I got it, I got it. First, I want to congratulate you folks for buying that land last year and investing in your own sustainability. I know that was your reserve funds, and you took a big leap purchasing additional farmland, so you had income. Have you leased that land out this year?
Yes, we have. It's leased out for $206 an acre, along with the county farm home that we couldn't lease out before because of the ditch.
Yeah, we had some back acres there, couldn't get across that.
Yes.
Do you know how much additional revenue that's going to produce for you?
The property, the 23 acres that we purchased, is about $4,600, and then the additional 11 acres that couldn't be reached before, that's, I mean, roughly $2,300, so six, you know, close to $7,000.
Take its match to 100%, right?
The county home property, because it goes to the general fund, but the property that we purchased, because it can't go through your fund. And it wasn't so simple as just, you know, having it go through. The state watches those kind of things, so we just, you know...
Yeah, we were talking about doing a flip-flop, but it was a little too thin on the veneer. You could pretty well see through it. But still, they have revenue coming in. They invested their reserves. We had about, as he indicated, we had about 11 acres that was across a creek that we really couldn't get across, so they were laying unused for producing money from crop. And we had thought about, we had tried to purchase the land, but you decided to purchase the land yourself and invest in your future. So I just got to congratulate you on doing that. That was a bold move. So they have a little additional revenue there. You know, we pull the money from the Stormwater District forward from last year, and then add additional money from the Stormwater this year. I think we're only talking about about another $35,000 from the general fund. I don't see how that's not...
They're doing RNPDS, so...
And I know these guys got May, you know, and May's coming up pretty quick, which you match with the state.
I bet they're at least the last day.
Yeah, and I bet you, last year, the fees were about 11.5. We're estimating 17.5, so I think we're going to see about an extra $6,000 in fees. So that brings it down to about $29,000, because the fees go into the general fund. Scott's been pretty aggressive out there with these guys out in the field. He looks a little quiet over there, but he's manhandling them out there. So you're doing a good job, Scott. I know you're still new and learning the way around out there. So I just think, if you want, I think we can do this.
Okay. Okay. Well, I can certainly...
We have to have it on the journey next week?
Make sure that we...
Yeah, but if you just tell me what you want, I can just put it all together and bring it to you, if you like that scenario.
Okay. Well, the request is for the $95,000...
So it'll be 30, 30, and 35?
Right.
Good?
Okay.
Sounds good.
This way, we have to back in May and push that time.
Every year, we've got two days for the state, so I don't want to do that this year.
Yeah, so I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you go.
We're working with you guys, thanks.
Good work.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, yeah. It's been a joy and a pleasure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mentioned the program, I mean, that really like fit the bill for what I was looking for, because I just didn't want, I want something to get a return out of it, you know, because that money was there.
Were you getting like 0.01% interest or something like that?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Anemic.
Yeah. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the day. Beautiful out there.
Thank you.
We have another presentation.
Yes.
It's a little late.
Well, April is Community College Month, and we are honored to have the best community college in the nation, as far as we're concerned, in the House, absolutely.
First in student success.
First in student success. And honored to have Dr. Ballinger here this morning with us. Good morning, Dr. Ballinger.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Lundey, it's an absolute pleasure to be here at your meeting today, and I thank you and Commissioner Kukoski and Commissioner Sueda for welcoming us today and a team from Lorain County Community College. So, yes, it is National Community College Month, as designated by, can we switch to the presentation, please? As designated by the American Community College Trustees Association. And to that end, I am very proud to have joining us this morning three of our Lorain County Community College trustees. I'd like for them to stand, to be recognized, starting first with Mike Sherman, who is a proud Lorain County Community College alum, as well as serving as a trustee. And joining Mike this morning is Maggie Quinones and Tess Gardner. And in addition to that, I have students who will be joining me today. Is there a... The PowerPoint question?
Are you ready to go? You were introducing people, so I just switched back to the camera.
It's part of the presentation. Thank you. And so joining me today, I have students who will be introduced throughout the presentation who will be making comments. But we brought you a little treat, as well as members of the audience, to share some of the culinary delights that come out of our culinary program. So in recognition of Community College Month, Jen Judkins is passing out Community College Month cookies that have been prepared especially for everyone this morning.
Thank you.
I knew there was a good reason to that.
So as she is passing those out, and you're enjoying those, I would be remiss if I did not highlight and invite the community to our Sage and Seed Restaurant, which is the culinary restaurant within the Norton Culinary Center. And it is open Tuesday and Wednesday evenings from 5:30 until 7:30. And the food is prepared by our culinary students, and it's part of their capstone class this spring semester. So you're all welcome to come there to temperature your palates. So I am just so proud of the students at Lorain County Community College and their accomplishments. And when we look at the students and the cost of attendance, we're proud that Lorain County Community College continues to be one of the lowest tuitions in the state of Ohio. Despite that, oftentimes, it is very challenging with costs and additional barriers as students attend college. So scholarships have been extremely important to getting students to that finish line. In fact, 77% of the students who attend LCCC are on some form of financial assistance. So the scholarships really make a tremendous impact, not only in terms of the students and their future, but the community's vitality overall. So I would like to thank you, Lorain County Commissioners, for the scholarship support that you have provided to our students through two different scholarships. One is the sustainability and environment. In fact, it connects very much to the previous conversation that we just had, our presentation. And the second one is one that's directly related to the workforce needs of our community through health and safety. The Health and Safety Scholarship is the newest one that you have established, and that benefits students who are enrolled in our criminal justice and/or addiction counseling programs. And as we have, all as a community, united together around how do we combat the opioid epidemic, Lorain County Community College, thanks to your scholarship, has been training students to earn certification in a short-term certificate that was developed in collaboration with Locata. And that program leads to an Associate of Applied Science and Human Services. It's 11 terms and includes 300 hours of practicum. So the students are actually out in the field then, working to really address those individuals who are in recovery. So, and the scholarship that you created also supports our criminal justice program, as well as our police academy program. I'm pleased today to introduce, and I'd like her to just stand, our Dean of our Social Science and Human Services Division, which houses all of these programs, Dr. Denise Douglas from Avon. Denise, thank you. And joining her, I am delighted to introduce to you one of our graduating students for the spring semester, Mr. Noah Antenoch, who is a graduate of Avon High School. Noah, if you could please stand. And he is in his second year. He will be graduating in May. He will be graduating in May with his degree in criminal justice, and his plan is to continue on through our university partnership with Youngstown State University that has the bachelor's degree on our campus in law enforcement. And Noah's goal is to follow in the footsteps of his dad, who is a police officer. So thank you, Noah. And now I would like to share a little bit of a background about Lorain County Community College. Many of you know so much about LCCC, particularly our Commissioner President, Mr. Lundey, who is a graduate of Lorain County Community College.
Proud graduate.
Proud graduate of Lorain County Community College. As I'm sure others in our audience, can I just ask who may have attended Lorain County Community College? That's fabulous. Wonderful testimonial to the strength of your community college, which was the first community college in the state of Ohio. And that was driven by the residents of this community back in nineteen sixty-three to develop Ohio's first community college. And that was for the needs of this community, of the residents, and of the employers located here. We have had eighty-nine percent of our graduates live and work in this region. And the others who don't, it's typically because they have moved or no longer are working and are retired. We have about ten thousand students a year that go through workforce and customized training. At the associate degree level, we have ten thousand students and then another three thousand students within our university partnership. And as Commissioner Lundey said when he introduced our presentation, we have been designated or recognized by the American Association of Community Colleges this past year as being the number-one community college in the United States for student success. So we're very proud of that recognition and honor. And what that translates into is that since two thousand and eleven, we have had a seventy-nine percent increase in our graduation rate. And our two thousand and eighteen graduating class was the largest graduating class in the college's history with two thousand and eighteen graduates. So, you know, if I were a betting person to have two thousand and eighteen graduates in two thousand and eighteen was quite the extraordinary circumstance. So I would like to highlight now, and I will have several students joining me, some of the programs that are making such an extraordinary difference. And the first one that I'm going to start with is called SAIL, which is an acronym for Students Accelerating in Learning. This was a model coming out of the city universities of New York. We had philanthropic support that came from the Great Lakes Foundation to try to replicate the very successful program from New York City. Three colleges in Ohio were chosen for this several years ago, LCCC being one of those three. And the intent of this program was to improve upon graduation rate by wrapping around intensive services for those students, as well as books and tutoring, and that was mandatory, and gift card, or food cards and transportation, again, addressing the barriers associated with it. So we have, we have performed in the same way as New York with a forty-three percent graduation within three years. And that has just been an extraordinary result. So I'm proud to introduce to you today, and I'll ask him to join me, Mr. Kenneth Glenn. Kenny is a lifelong Elyria resident. He completed the SAIL program. He served in the military for part of his career, and then he came back home and was a steelworker following that and the challenges associated with the dislocation. He then was an individual who had great service through the Lorain County Ohio Means Jobs, and from that began his journey at Lorain County Community College. So I'd like for Ken to share with you his story.
Thank you, and good morning.
Good morning.
It's a true honor to be here in front of my federal citizens and the commissioners. I'm Kenneth Glenn. I am born and raised right here in Elyria, Ohio. I am from the south side of Elyria. As a little guy, I was raised in Riverside Homes Project. I don't know if anybody knows where Riverside Homes is at. As a teenager, I grew up in South Maple Street. I am a nineteen-eighty-four graduate of Elyria High School, as well as a joint vocational school in McKennaville-Drafting. I used to work in this building as a senior, drawing the city maps, the old original city map tracer.
We were actually at the JVS at the same time. I'm one year ahead of you, but I was at JVS too, same time.
Oh, wow. It's an honor. I love it. I love it. Awesome, awesome. So after graduating, I did enlist into the military to be all I can be in the Army, and I beg to differ, Army guys, we all need Navy, old Army.
Let's just start a riot.
So I, after ten years of service, I was on to be discharged in nineteen ninety-four, where I came home and I began my career as a steelworker for U.S. Colby Republic Steel. Eighteen-plus years, I went through a couple of layoffs and finally the plant closed in, I believe, two thousand and fourteen. I found myself as a displaced worker, and my first line of help was with Ohio Means Job in the Department of Labor, which I was, became a, since I was a displaced worker, I qualified for this thing called TRA, Trade Readjustment, Trade Readjustment Act. And what that did, that allowed me to get retooling for up to two years, so they paid for my, for me to enroll in LCC, which was always a life dream of mine to get a degree. So I took full advantage of that. I needed to change my life because I was an injured worker, and it was hard finding employment as an injured worker, especially since all my background was in steel. So I took it upon myself to invest in myself and take that role on as, even though I hadn't been in school in over thirty years. So it was, it was kind of frightening, but exciting at the same time. I must say that LCC and the SAIL program, because I was fortunate enough to get in that sales program, that SAIL program really accelerated my life, just like it says, students accelerating in learning. It did. You had mandatory tutoring. If it wasn't for that mandatory tutoring, I probably would have walked out of those doors without nobody knowing it. Because it was mandatory, I had some teeth in the game, and I was receiving some benefits from the Ohio Department of Labor, my unemployment. So, you know, it was like a job to me going to school. So with the sales program, having an extra vising, the tutoring, those gas cards, which was critical to me because unemployment money is hard to live off on. So I took advantage of that. In eighteen months, I got my first social degree. Shocked me. I could not believe that. And I also excelled while I was there. My story got put out there. I became a dream scholar with Achieving a Dream Foundation. And I was on a national stage representing Lorain County Community College, and I got to talk about my city, the south side in particular, where I grew up and everything that shaped me and molded me as I traveled the world as a service member. So I've always been honored to be an Elyria resident and took it everywhere I went. I am more thrilled to be the face of LCC, so to speak, because I've probably been in your mailboxes or you see me on some posters here and there. I am truly honored to say thanks to the faculty and the staff and Dr. Ballinger. They have truly put the wind back underneath my wings, and I'm flying higher than I've ever been with the quality and satisfaction of my life. So thank you, and appreciate it.
Man, you have a great spokesman in Kenny.
He is a wonderful spokesman. And I would be remiss if I did not thank you in terms of the wonderful support that we have had working with Barb Tamas, the Director of Jobs and Family Services here in Lorain County. And the partnership really gave us the ability to look across systems and agencies from a statewide perspective, because it's both the Ohio Department of Jobs and Family Services as well as the Department of Higher Education. So we were able to really look at the characteristics of students that were also TANF-eligible to see how we could leverage the funds together. But a breakthrough that is now in front of the state, and it was incorporated into Governor DeWine's budget proposal, which was put forward by Chancellor Gardner, is how can we create from a statewide perspective the expansion of SNAP ENT, SNAP ENT being the assistance of a lower income level, which is essentially food stamps. The ENT is the education and training. The state has authorization to do that, so that individuals who qualify for SNAP could in fact be part of this program. And so it's a matter right now of the state putting the plan together that would give that authorization. It happens in many other states throughout the country. So we were very delighted to see that incorporated into the proposed budget. And again, it would not require new funds to serve students with this. It would be, for those who already qualify, utilizing education and training as a part of that. So we hope to be able to expand this program even further, working back with the county and with the state. The other major accomplishment in addition to being named the best community college in the country this past year is that Thank you. Is that your community college became the first community college in the state of Ohio to now be authorized to deliver our own applied bachelor's degree. So not only are we the first community college, we're now the first community college to have that authorization. And our first applied bachelor's degree is in the area of microelectromechanical systems, MEMS. And as difficult as that may be to say, this is one of the, not only jobs of today, but it's where our economy is going. This is about sensors. It's about the industrial Internet of Things. And one of the individuals who is a student of LCCC, Sheri Washington, I'm going to ask Sheri to join me. She went with me to Columbus because we had to lobby, and then once the legislation was passed, we had to then go through an entire process of why this particular degree was needed and what did it mean to employers and what would it mean to students. So Sheri will share her story with you. And like Ken Glenn, she too worked with the Lorain County Ohio Means Jobs Office. And so I can't emphasize enough to you the important role that the workforce development system within our county provides to students. And now Sheri can share her great success.
I was married for over twenty-some years, and I was an at-home mom. And suddenly I was found to be a single mother with a child. And I had a job. I lost my job. I went on unemployment for the first time in my life. Didn't ever figure I would have a hard time finding another job. So I used the Ohio Means Jobs Avenue and went there every day. And slowly but surely, time was ticking and my unemployment was running out. And I couldn't go back from which I came. I had to move forward. And I was walking out one day, and I looked up and I said, Lord, please, give me a sign, give me a direction. And as I'm walking out, I've been coming and out of that office for months. I looked down and I seen a flyer. Said paid internship on it. Really? Okay, let me see what this is about. So I went to the seminar, and I met the professor, Johnny Vanderford, and he changed my life. I never thought I was material for college, let alone going to be graduating in former classes. So, thank you. The college has not only supported me, but my daughter is also now attending there as an early college person, so, as a young lady. So we're both going to be graduating and getting an associate's degree. And nobody in our family has any education. So I don't know who's going to see this, but don't ever think that you can't do something. It's not easy, but it's definitely accomplishable.
Yes.
So thank you.
Congratulations. You did amazing. You did amazing. What a great story.
She's a wonderful public speaker. And we're so proud of Kenny. We're so proud of Sheri. And we're also very proud of our students in high school who are graduating with college credit and many graduating with their associate's degrees. So our early college high school, in fact, you heard Sheri just mention that her daughter is now in the early college high school. Our early college high school, which was started with funding, startup funding for several years from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation back in two thousand and one, has made a tremendous difference for first-generation college students and high school students simultaneously, all on our campus. The impact of it has been nothing short of extraordinary. I have joining me today one of our students, and I will be introducing AJ. AJ Ramos, who is one of this year's seventy-eight early college high school students who will be earning his associate's degrees as well as his high school diploma, all on our campus. This is the first time in the history of early college high school that all of the students are earning both simultaneously, which is, you know, truly, truly extraordinary and remarkable. Our early college students, in terms of the Ohio graduation tests, their scores outperform the rest of the community. And the students, again, are first generation. They've made a commitment that this is what they want to do, and students like AJ certainly exemplify that. He's going to be continuing on after graduation, hopefully through our university partnership. And we were just chatting a little earlier about the University of Toledo, because he's interested in artificial intelligence and computer science. So AJ, if you could share your story, would love to hear it. Thank you.
How's it going, everybody?
Good. Good morning.
So my name is AJ, and she said, I'm an early college student right now, senior. I will be graduating May eighteenth with my Associates of Science and Associates of Arts. Also with an honors diploma from my high school. I completed all of that, all those requirements. So early college in LC is a really interesting experience for me. It gave me what, it gave me the education I wouldn't have been able to afford otherwise, because my father, my mother, my mom works at CBS and my dad is a steelworker. He's one of the very few steelworkers left in the plant. He is the grievance chairman, and he is still negotiating contracts to this day to get everybody back working. So he's working long hours. Everybody's working long hours at my house, so my job is my education. And LC has given me the best foot forward to then go and get the further education I want to do. I want to go into computer science. And with that, as she said, I want to do artificial intelligence. And I wanted to talk a little bit about what I've done with my computer science. So I'm sort of self-taught. I've taught myself a little bit. And something I like to talk about is computers. I love computers and people, I build computers for people. I've done that. I do custom builds and do water-cooled builds. A lot of cool things. I do it for people that, I'm like Best Spice Geek Squad, if you can think of it. But there's one person at LC that I'd like to thank for all of my success. Her name is Pamela Pastor. Her name is Pamela Pastor. She is a student success coach in the early college program. And like most people, I'm my biggest critic and half of the time, I'm the reason I don't succeed is because I beat myself up, beat myself up. And she's the person that has kept me going. She's the person that's told me, "Hey, you need to reevaluate the situation and continue pushing forward." There's so many times I wanted to give up because it's not easy, early college is not easy, contrary to belief. Everybody says it's easy, it's really not easy. And she's the reason that I've been able to continue my education. I tutor people now, I, with math, math is my thing. So, other seniors, juniors, sophomore, freshman, I tutor them with math. And I, LC has given me the opportunity to continue with my education, as I said, but I have a sister that has special needs and she's never going to be able to live on her own. She's going to need a caretaker. And because of LC, I'm going to be able to get the best foundation for her to continue and live a normal life because I'm going to be able to get the education to get the job that could in turn help her. So, I think of my education as help for my sister. So, thank you.
Wow.
We're so proud of AJ, Sherri, and Kenneth. They exemplify the students who we serve at Lorraine County Community College. In terms of all of the students who are enrolled in college classes while they are in high school, last May, 43% of all Lorraine County students graduating had college credit from Lorraine County Community College, 43%. So, we're, and their stories are all remarkable. And what we know is that we are changing lives and we are changing futures and we are changing this county's future by creating a more educated community workforce, employers will be more competitive, and the lives of all of the families, most importantly, will be enriched by that. And that equates to, by the way, the 43% of students graduating with that as well as others who have college credit, that equates to over $29 million of savings to families because those courses are provided free of charge to them. So, that is just such a return on investment for the entire community. And we look forward to continuing to serve even greater numbers of students with that. And so that concludes my presentation on National Community College Month. And I would be happy to answer any questions as I'm sure any of our LCCC team would be.
Where are we at with the kiosk for the
Yes, that's a great question. So, the kiosk that Administrator Cortez is referring to is from the Department of Jobs and Family Services because part of our intent as we serve individuals who have, or who currently qualify for TANF, but as hopefully the expansion occurs as well for SNAP, will be located within an area of our college center that we are currently, the renovations will start in about a month. So, as we end the semester and that will be ready to open as we begin the fall semester. And that's for an advocacy resource center. So, the approach of the advocacy resource center, which will be co-located on that ground floor of college center, the library is above it, will be a one-stop shop, if you will, that will be for those types of benefits as well as we will be moving our food pantry into that area. We have declared Lorraine County Community College as a hunger-free campus. Food insecurity has been a major barrier for many students. The most recent survey of our students indicated that more than 60% of them have had food insecurity over the past 30 days. So, our food pantry, which we've had now for several years, we will move into this area. We are taking our Women's Link Program, which we have had now for over 20 years. And that is the service that we provide for students to then connect with all of the various resources within the community. So, our staff from the Women's Link Program will actually be located then in the ARC to provide those services. And then the kiosk will be located within that main area.
The Commissioner says, you remember from our tour of Job and Family Services, the kiosk area in the lobby and having conversations and actually with Ms. Tamas, Tracy Green and Dr. Ballinger out at the college, there's somewhat of a barrier to people that may qualify for SNAP coming to the center on, out on, at Job and Family Services. So, I always thought bringing the center to them and seeing if they could qualify for SNAP benefits would really greatly enhance their ability to continue their educational pursuits. There's a lot of people going hungry and still out there trying to get their education. The only thing was we needed a secure area and we've struggled with that secure area for that kiosk installation. So, I'm glad to hear it's going to be for the fall semester because we've been looking forward to that. And I met with Bob on the SNAP issue with the state. It looks like there's going to be some clear lines of resolution with that shortly and that has to do with some, they used to take other additional income resources into consideration that they're going to now come off the table for additional benefits. So, I hope the state's moving more quickly in that direction so that we can get at least SNAP benefits. And for people that don't understand that, you know, that's more food for people. They put all these names on things, but it's about feeding people. It's not about giving them housing, it's not about, it's about giving them a meal and ensuring that they have some food to eat. And also during the presentation, you referenced a few of your students and bless them all for what they're doing, rest of Ohio Means Jobs. I will say that that's your department. Workforce Development is more commonly known as around the vernacular. Mike Longo and company, the whole department works for you, they work in conjunction with the college real closely. There's, we have a lot of money, we have a lot of good people over there, we have a lot of good partnerships with the college, the JVS. We're constantly trying to help people with a handout. Most people don't want a handout, they want a handup. That's all they really need, that's all they really want. So, I got to put a plug in to come out, come out there to Ohio Means Jobs. We also have a boatload of services to provide for folks, young and old. We serve about, oh, 15% of our population we serve are veterans. And we have very special veterans programs over this, we work closely with the veteran services. We serve everything from non-GED people all the way through master's degree folks for retraining. So, I got to get all plugs in too, sorry Dr. Ballinger, but, so, please come on out because it's the mosaic of services that allow somebody to achieve success. It's the partnerships, the collaborations that we were able to put together in our community and they're strong and they're getting stronger every day. Thank you, didn't mean to piggyback, but I wanted to get out there.
The students that came up to speak today, you didn't see Dr. Ballinger behind you, but she looked like a proud mother back there, just like beaming with pride for all of you. It's very nice to see how proud you are of your students, Dr. Ballinger.
You know, that's what we're all about at the end of the day. It is all about students, they are our focal point, they are the center of it all. And I truly believe that every student's dream matters. We can look at statistics, but the reality is it's every student, it's every story behind every statistic. And I will share with you that, in fact, I just met AJ for the first time a week or so ago. Kenny and Sherri, I've known for the past couple of years. I met AJ along with other students who we hosted when we had the president of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation on campus with a team for an entire day in preparation, he will be our commencement speaker, Mr. Alan Goldston, on May 18th. And so we had a surprise call from the Gates Foundation a couple of weeks ahead of time to say, "He really wants to come spend a day on our campus, meeting with our students, feeling, you know, what has really led to the success that we've achieved and our recognition as being first in the country for student success." And then we spent time going out to our learning center in Lorraine as well. And the pride that you heard today demonstrated by our students was truly remarkable throughout the entire day, everything unscripted, to hear what the college means to them. So, when I think back to the vision that the residents of Lorraine County had in 1963 when the college was created, was truly one of charting the future of not only higher education, but changing the, you know, lives over decades and decades. So, thank you for the opportunity to come here today.
If I could congratulate you, Dr. Ballinger, I think your energy, your leadership, your broad vision is why we have those extraordinary results. And I want to let AJ know, I'll be there for your commencement address because I have a granddaughter in that class who will be graduating.
Wonderful.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commencement is the, one of the best times out there, there's nothing like seeing those people prance across that stage. The, you know, the faces, the families, it's the heat out inside the gym house there. But it's, it's well worth it. And the poor trustees up there in the robes dying. But that is, that is, that is the, that is the end of the journey at the educational level and the beginning of the journey of life for so many. You know, I know we wanted to talk about the scholarships a little bit.
Sure, we're definitely going to have a discussion about that. I just want to add that, you know, for the viewers at home, they should give themselves a pat on the back too because it's through the community support that these success stories are possible. And I can't stress enough how critical it is for our county to support our community college and to continue to support our community college because it's these success stories that we're making possible. You know, the challenges of a community college student are great and many of them are helping to support the family at home. Many of them are working multiple jobs. I know I was working three jobs, I think, when I was going to the community college. And it's important to have those mentors and the guidance and the instructors that work closely with you. Also, I know that, I just want to brag a little bit about the community college, when it became the first to be able to offer a four-year degree. I understand in Columbus, from my sources down there, that it was a dynamic presentation. And I just want you to know that our community college went in and, you know, had to make a strong presentation to be able to offer a four-year degree. And you have to be able to demonstrate that this is something not offered by a four-year college. But when it came to presentation time and presenting the technology, basically, a competing entity will say, was holding something in their hand and we were able to tell them that basically it was on the end of a fingertip and something you had to look at through a microscope. So, yeah, exactly, not, not real big. But, you know, it just goes to show how far advanced we are with this community college. And it is just an amazing honor to be able to receive that designation for a four-year degree at a community college. We were talking earlier about the success stories and also the scholarship programs that the Board of Commissioners and through the county have been supporting. Two scholarships, the Lorraine County B. Green Scholarship and then also the Lorraine County Health and Safety Scholarships. And we've been reviewing these numbers and looking at where we're at with fund balances. And I know that we've had some individual conversations with the administrator about it and reviewing this. And I know this board is very interested in making a greater investment, you know, in our students so that we can have more of these success stories. And as we look at the programs, you also have to have some reasonable funding in there to be able to help students as much as possible. We'd like to raise these levels. We were looking at, and Jim, you can correct me at any time if I'm off course here, but I think we are looking at additional $75,000 for the B. Green Scholarship and I believe another $50,000 for the Lorraine County Health and Safety Scholarship.
Thank you so much.
And I think I also recommended an additional 50 next year for the B. Green.
That's correct.
I, two things, Commissioner, that hasn't been said here and I'm a little premature, but the college is getting ready to launch a, we're not doing a campaign for the foundation?
We're just in the midst of deciding it, so it hasn't been formally done yet.
Okay, well, I'm on the foundation and I just, well, I thought maybe we were, okay, well, okay, it may be a bigger piece. Anyway, hopefully we'll, if they do it, we'll get some credit for it. But also later this year, you have, you have a levy on the ballot, right?
And that has not been decided either.
That hasn't been decided either, okay.
Well, I know, I know that these scholarships are obviously, we're going to be able to reach more students and I think we would be able to reach upwards of maybe four students by doing the additional funding under the Health and Safety Scholarship and I think two students under the B. Green Scholarship.
The, well, I'll give you the numbers, they were provided there. I think you'll reach at least, was it four, at the 150,000 level? And then at the 100,000 level, I thought there was two plus an additional stipend, about a thousand.
That's correct.
And of course, there's, that would be a corpus and then you would generate interest on that.
Sure.
So that there would be additional opportunity going forward. Next year, you would add the 50,000, you would level out all scholarships. And I would hope that in the future, we would continue to service those scholarships to have a greater impact in the community for the folks that need, again, I always like to say a handout, not a handout. And those scholarships will remain with Lorraine County residents.
Yes, and in fact, Lisa Brown, who's the executive director of the Lorraine County Community College Foundation is here. And she really provides the leadership. So, our foundation is a separate entity from the college. And I know that, so, to your point Administrator Cortez, on a capital campaign for the foundation, it's still in preliminary discussion and planning, so we haven't, the foundation board has not yet made a formal decision going forward with that. And to your, and to your point with regard to the levy, so we are supported by an operating levy that the residents dating back to 1963 created to provide the funding, the model of the funding. Part of it comes from the county, part of it comes from the state and the remainder from student tuition. And so, our operating levy for the college expires in, at the end of 2020. So, so
I guess what I should say is your first opportunity to be on the ballot would be this November. My apologies to the Board of Trustees, I was just looking for a few moments of free air time to demonstrate our support because you do not have to come back to the Board of Commissioners and request permission to be on the ballot, which many organizations do have. So, you won't be here to discuss that with us. As a freestanding political subdivision, you have your own taxing authority. So, I thought I would take this opportunity for a little free press for you, just in case you're on in November, to get you the opportunity to demonstrate how important those additional local dollars are to success of the students in Lorraine County. It's a small investment and a large return.
Yeah, those local
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, those local dollars are very critical. In the state of Ohio, they base so many things on the graduation. And as we all know, and as I pointed out earlier, you know, when you're a community college student and you're retraining or working your way through school or trying to help mom and dad pay the bills, it's kind of hard to get through sometimes in a real short window of time. And that little hiccup on the family front kind of can cause you to even jump off track for a while or whatever. So, it's important to have the ongoing community support. We're always paying attention to when things are coming up and when the first window opens up and so those discussions are always going on. But I just want to point out to the community that the way that these shape up, the Lorraine County B. Green Scholarship, as we pointed out, you have to be a Lorraine County resident. County B. Green Scholarship, as we pointed out, you have to be a Lorain County resident and interest in, and interest in and commitment to sustainability, environmental science, and then under Lorain County Health and Safety Scholarship, you have to be a Lorain County resident in the areas of interest, criminal justice, police academy, and our, and/or addiction counseling. So, I, I.
Commissioner, can I add one thing? Because you know how we're kind of subject to a lot of criticism when we do great things? The, the Commissioners do not pick who gets these scholarships.
No, we don't.
I, I gotta add that right now, you would think that it was a no-brainer, they don't, but somebody's going to go out there and say that you're giving scholarships away to people, your friends, your neighbors, and this, could you, I don't know, there's a process.
There's a process, yeah. So scholarships are a form of financial assistance, and so we have very defined regulations and compliance. In fact, Trustee Sherman sits on the foundation board and chairs the compliance committee. So we, we've got so many boxes we have to check in terms of both through our foundation as well as our financial aid office. So the, the donors or those who are contributing the funds do not have the opportunity to select who they are. And, and so that, that's part of that separation process that's critically important.
I'm sorry I had to bring that up, but you know that somebody's going to say that. So thank you, thank you very much.
But I, but I would like to add, because I really appreciated your presentation around sustainability and water quality, and made myself a note to follow back up with you, because as part of our science programs, we are doing a great deal with the Lake Erie water issues and have students, some from the early college high school, in fact, that are doing research in that area and are continuing their careers. So I'd love to have that follow-up conversation. And, and students in that field would qualify for those scholarships.
Right.
Well, if, if the board is comfortable with making these additional investments, I'll call them, investments in our future, so I would make the motion that we invest another $75,000 into the Lorain County B. Green Scholarship, and another $50,000 in the Lorain County Health and Safety Scholarship with looking at another additional $50,000 for next year for the Lorain County B. Green Scholarship. Those are structured correctly.
I'll work with budgeting to get the appropriate paperwork done based upon that resolution.
Great.
I'd be happy to second that.
Any further discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
There you go, congratulations on that.
Thank you so much. On behalf of our students, we appreciate it.
And before you leave the podium, we have a proclamation for you, which was where we began the program.
And that requires a picture too, so.
That's why I require a picture, but, but I would just like to say to you, Dr. Ballinger, and the board, and the whole community, that this proclamation is proclaiming April as Lorain County Community College Month throughout Lorain County. As we pointed out, we're very proud to have been the, the first community college in Ohio with a permanent campus, opening the doors in '66. Also, pointing out here, becoming the first community college in Ohio to authorize and deliver an applied bachelor's degree in the area of microelectronic manufacturing. I'm sorry, but I think I'd wash out in that one in the first week. And then also pointing out that through college credit, plus 43% of the 2018 Lorain County High School graduating class earned more than 33,000 college credits from the community college, saving millions of dollars to, to parents and college costs. We want to say that LCC enhances the quality of life for all in our community by delivering a variety of programs and services, including those for seniors and for the youth in our community. And now therefore, we, the Lorain County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize Lorain County Community College and declare the month of April as Lorain County Community College Month in honor of the sizable contributions made toward the community and for the higher educational needs of Lorain County. Signed by all three of the Commissioners. We'd like to come down and present this to you, Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you so much.
Mike.
How you doing? Hey, you didn't know that was coming, did you?
Who was the guy in the picture, looking back?
Well, now you know why I don't sit next to Mike at the foundation, because all we do is talk, get in trouble. I bet. How you doing?
So at this point, we're going to resume board business, but if those needing to return to the office and work and get things done, certainly feel free if you'd like to leave at this time. We don't want you to feel like you have to stay here the remainder of the meeting. But thank you for being here and your participation and your involvement and your support.
Yeah.
That's a boring.
Okay. We'll see. Bye.
Such gratitude, you would think that she was taking the money home.
Oh, yeah, it's great.
Such gratitude, you know?
Okay. Have a good day, everyone. Madam Clerk, we'll return to business.
Under resolutions, number one, investments.
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Transfers?
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Travel?
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions in Lorain County Commissioners?
He's been so quiet today, Administrator Jim Cortez.
Come on, horse.
We've had lots of discussion already.
We have, it's, but you know, it's always exciting when we have a lot of folks here with energy and we, you know, even though it's a little longer than we anticipate. I do have actually a great deal of personal issues today. We, we need to go over the labor contracts that we put off last week because I had to leave for a medical appointment. I have the, I have some issues with the Children Services Contract we need to discuss. Also, the completed contract with the Clerk of Clots and United State Workers of America Contract. It's pretty much patented, so I don't see any difficulty with, but we need to go over it, and we'll probably reemerge and vote on that contract, or we'll put it on the summary sheet. Also, potential hires I want to discuss in the crime lab, job and family services, solid waste, some board appointments and planning, and potential hire in the Budget Department. So all of those, I'm trying to figure out, yeah, we're still working on that real estate. So all of those topics, although under the Sunshine Act for Executive Session Discussions, I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive sessions and we, session, and we discuss those matters that I've identified. Thank you.
Approving of the reading in the minutes of March 27?
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Entering into a mutual aid assistance agreement with City of Elaria for fire arson investigation services, according with the Highway code 3737.24.
So move.
Second. Discussion. Chief, you, did you have anything, or you're just here for questions?
Just here to answer any questions.
You got to, a nice long meeting to sit through, right?
It always trial by fire, wasn't it?
Were there any thoughts you wanted to share with us, or anything you want to educate the community on, and as it relates to mutual aid? Unfortunately, we had to see a big mutual aid initiative in Grafton the other day, and it's so sad for what happened there.
Yes, I just wanted to thank the Commission. The City of Elaria has not really been involved in all aspects of mutual aid. For those in the community that aren't familiar, you know, the mutual aid aspects allows each of the county jurisdictions to utilize their resources as best as possible in their own communities, but also be a resource for other communities when the need arises, and those are during emergencies. As Commissioner Lundey pointed out, unfortunately this week, Grafton did have a very large fire and it required mutual aid from the fireside, and that also did include the Lorain County Investigators and the State Fire Marshal coming up from Columbus. And so, as the new chief, I wanted to get us back on board and be involved with the community and the county in all areas of mutual aid. So we have requested to be brought back into mutual aid. We've covered pretty much every other area, we just wanted to add arson and fire investigation.
Do you want to introduce yourself for those people that don't know you?
Yes, Chief Carl Maxi, Elaria Fire Department, new fire chief beginning in January. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you, I mean, since you're here, if you're comfortable, would you be willing to discuss how the mutual aid worked out yesterday? I know you played a role in that, but.
Yes, the mutual aid system works through the county 911 system. It works very well. They have two different types of aid. They have automatic aid as well as mutual aid. Automatic aid is things that are preset up to come in and have multiple jurisdictions respond. Mutual aid is a request, and that's normally done after you've decided that your resources can't handle the incident. So with the incident in Grafton, they did have some automatic aid. They did require additional aerials because of the size of the buildings and everything. So I do know our aerial responded as well as the City of Amherst. So mutual aid means that we come over, we take our equipment, we take our personnel. I believe we were there for roughly six hours and just support the community in anything they need. With mutual aid, everyone's responsible for their, their own billing, their own salaries, their own workman's compensation. So it's, it's just part of the collaboration of working with the rest of the community.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chief. See the mayor's here. Mayor, did you want to add anything on what happened in the community the other day, or update us? I, I gotta tell you, our prayers go out to your community. We're, it's just devastating to have that happen. If you could come up to one of the podiums. I don't mean to put you on the spot if there's something you'd want to share with us, but since we had the topic discussed here and saw how mutual aid is important to a community.
And I'd like to thank the chief, because they had Tower Eight there for, like you said, over six hours, and it was a critical piece of keeping that fire contained. They set up behind the fire structure and they just, I'm not sure, but it was well over probably a half million gallons of water went through there. And, you know, a lot of that water that came through the Tower Eight was supported by the Water Shuttle program that the county has with all the surrounding communities. So there is Water Shuttle, I think eight different departments were running Water Shuttle there, and they kept up with, we weren't, there wasn't a lack of water and a lack of response. So we just recently put up a water tower and completed some infrastructure downtown, which was significant. We were filling water in our water tower at about 700 gallons a minute, and they were using about 500 gallons a minute.
Wow.
So we were, there's just close to probably a million gallons of water when they told it all up that went on that fire. So I was actually here for the earlier part of your meeting, which I was late for, but I appreciate the fact that the, the matter handled earlier, got handled. It's great that when you have an annexation, that it truly is, doesn't always have to be contentious or kind of cooperation. And that was a good example of where we reached out to developer, the township and, and village, and we found common ground to make something work.
Nice. Great job.
Didn't even get it surveyed 10 times.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. Well, well, thank you, Mayor, and, and, you know, we're, I think a lot of us were trying to research and figure out if there's some ways that, you know, we can be of assistance in some way, or if you think of some ways, I know we're researching a couple of things on our end, so.
The State, the mayor's reached out to us and everybody, we really appreciate it. Yeah, it, I, I got up Monday morning to go to the post office box downtown, and was greeted with a plume of fire.
Wow.
It was quite the, quite the event. And, you know, those old structures started in the rear, and it just, the wind, the prevailing winds just pushed it up through the building. So it was, glad nobody got hurt. Everybody was just safe, so, thank you.
The important part, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have to, I, I was having a conversation with Tom Kelly, and he was explaining about the, the Water Shuttle and how important that is when you get into a big fire situation. And, you know, you only got so much water available at a time, but I, I guess there were some crews spending most of the day just shuttling water, right, Chief? So a lot of logistics go into those things, and as we said, that's an important example where the mutual aid is so important. I believe there were also units from Medina or Medina County that assisted, so, so it's, it's, it's good to have a mutual aid agreement in place.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Entering the lease with Port Authority for 540 South Abbey Road, Elaria being apportioned unit two effective retroactive February 1st, 2017 through January 31st, 2026, and an annual cost of $118,000.
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Approving and entering emergency contract with U.S. Bridge, Cambridge, and I take $94,055 for immediate repairs to the Stocking Road Bridge 0038 in Rochester and Brighton Townships, grant application to District 9, Round 33, received 48% due to potential safety hazards associated with the closed bridge. OPWC agreed to advance the funding so that the construction can begin immediately and will be paid from the engineering project bridge account.
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Public comment.
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? You have three minutes to address the board. Seeing no one.
Mr. Cortez?
Mr. Cortez.
So fast again.
That's right, we're back to you.
Everybody just fled the room. Matt, you let them out.
Yeah, I know.
There goes Peter. I think once we're in here, we should lock the door and only buzz them out. Yeah, okay, Peter. The, I just want to wish my Navy buddy who lives next door to me a happy birthday, Bill Stubbs, this week. All the veterans left, I, I'm sorry, I should have said something earlier, but I wanted to wait for my comment. There is. He's a WW2 and Korea War Vet, retired Navy. I took him out to dinner Saturday night.
That was really cool.
It's a little difficult, challenging getting him out, but he's one of the original EOD, prior Navy SEALs. Did that stuff before there was SEALs. He was 93 this week, and we went out and had dinner, and the man still can drink me under the table. The, the, we did have a DD, a Desert Aid Driver, not a diver. But, you know, it's, it's, there's not a lot of WW2 guys still around, and so if you know a few, treat them well. Please think about them even on non-special days. You know, I've only lived down there a few years, but, you know, I, I know Bill is, is a special guy, and I, I do try to remember him a few times a year and spend a little time with him. It's, he served our country in two, two big wars, and, and so I, I have a lot of fun talking to him over, over dinner and a couple cocktails. So happy birthday, Bill, and we have.
Do you want to describe, oh, the gift he received, you were saying was so special?
Well, you know, there was, there was, there was some challenge coins, there was proclamations from some of our federal legislators, there was, and we had put a whole package together of different things. And, and, you know, we, I, I waited to, I had the dinner all scheduled, but we waited too late to bring it all together. So it was, it was, it wasn't a complete surprise, but more elements of it were a surprise. And one of his grandsons was able to fly in from Denver and do a few things. And so you never know, you know, they're, they're very healthy, 93, but you just never know. So we, we do try to take advantage of some opportunities. Small folks, but, but I'm always impressed of that, that I get to spend time, and he wasn't somebody that went into World War II a month before it ended. I mean, he actually served overseas, fought, and, and so, but I feel honored to be able to do those kind of things. So I, I'll end my report, because I know we've had a long morning and we do have a long afternoon yet. Thank you. Oh, wait a minute, I can't end my report, Karen Davis will stomp on me. We, we have some stuff we need to do for Golden Acres. If I haven't lost it in all my dribble. Commissioners, we, we really need to get the roof underway on Golden Acres. I have a, some stuff I'll pass here, it has to do with the roof, some duck working, um, the, I don't have the...
Here's the bids.
You have it? Okay, you have the same thing I do, okay, great.
Teresa, she'll just let them look at it.
So...
We need that.
Do you need to borrow it?
Well, you know, I can't use my right hand, because Ms. Ballinger switched the presentation so much, I'd have kept pushing the button over here. The, I didn't know it was going to have to work so much, I, it was like, okay. Anyway, the, the, it's time to get these bids out there and get this awarded, get the work done. I know we've been struggling with Recovery One, there's been a lot of requirement changes at the state. It seems like every other week, there's new requirements that changes the, the ability to use the facility towards Recovery One. So while we're trying to navigate through all of those things at the state level, the roof goes un-repaired, and it needed to be repaired, not repaired, replaced five years ago, needs, we did repairs to it, we did repairs on the repairs three years ago, it started leaking again this year, we've, we've tried to keep it watertight, but regardless of whether Recovery One goes there, which I'm going to be honest with you, I'm having some struggles with, with the new state requirements and the things that they're, they're challenging us to meet, and it's not just us, it's everybody. I think they're trying real hard to, to elevate this, but in that, in that, that challenge to elevate, they're, they're tasking facilities to a level that, that's making it very difficult.
Eliminates.
Diff, yes, and, and you could speak to that after, you know, I'm sure. The roof still needs to be replaced, so regardless, we're going to put a roof on that building. So I, I think we need to award the bids for the roof. The, the HVAC at that facility, the units are on the roof there, they're older, the duck work runs off of those on the roof, because you can't put it inside the building, given the age of the building, the type of construction, all the duck work runs across the roof, it's insulated, duck work, it's very old, has to be removed to work on the roof, so you don't use the old duck work on the back, the insulation comes off, it's just, they're not, it's not good. So, I want to also award, but not initiate the work on the duck work, so that we have that done, because I'm having the HVAC units inspected and, and looked at closely. Rather than replace them right now, I would like to get a few more years out of them. I want to make sure that's possible, I believe it's possible, and if, if that, that's the way I think it is, then we'll go ahead and install new duck work off of those, and so that inspection will be ongoing while the roof is being done. It had been our plan, or what had been other people's plan, to replace all of that equipment, it's just cost prohibitive right now unless we have a, a better understanding of the future. Now, if we, if, once we get that better understanding, it'll be a little more costly to lift them off later, because we had hoped to lift them off while we were doing the roof work, but not knowing exactly where all these requirements are going, I just can't recommend lifting those HVAC units off right now and replacing them.
Unfortunately, if we had gone forward with the project, we would be grandfathered in, but because we're a new entity coming to the game...
Maybe on some elements, on some elements, and I'm sure on all elements, maybe on some. It depends on which services we were providing, and it's been a hard road to figure out which ones were. I, I will tell you, I got confused yesterday at the last meeting about really what we were doing. We've gone from this to this, and so, that said, I still know we need this roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the state keeps moving the ball, and we will have follow-up conversations with folks in Columbus and try to figure out how to make everything merry, but, yes, they are definitely moving the ball all the time on the field here, and it, it's hard to get a good gauge, so with the new administration coming in, that provides some challenges too. The new administration's very supportive of wanting to address the epidemic throughout the state. However, the way things would be delivered are still being, I guess, worked out, but we were waiting for them to, to give us some requirements, if you will, and waiting and waiting, and those finally were produced, and as I said, also because of the transition to a new administration, but, so we'll have some conversations and see what, what things look like, but in the meantime, we have a responsibility to take care of a county-owned building, and it certainly needs a roof, and then we're also going to give you, give the county administrator authority that if there is a need for the duck work to be adjusted, that's $38,000 for that.
It probably will be, the only change in that will be if the units, some of the units prove unusable, then we'll have to talk about one or two replacements, that may alter the duck work. If it goes the way I hope it goes, and I said hope, not the way I think, I said hope, then we'll just proceed ahead with that duck work. So, that, that's, that's where we're at, and when I know more, I'll let you know more. And Commissioner Lundee, you know, the, the building is a substantial building, so we need, I watched the county in the 90s allow green acres to, which I thought was a really gorgeous building, to fall completely into disrepair. By the time I, I became the county administrator, the building was really not salvageable anymore, and, and that was a terrible thing, and I, I just don't want to see that happen to Golden Acres while, while, while we're trying to reprogram the building. Even if we don't reprogram, the building needs to be stabilized and maintained even into the future. We're still conditioning the building in a minor way. It doesn't take a lot to maintain a building, it takes very little to let it go to waste.
Yeah, preservation's important there.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, do you want to...
Madam Wording, contract absolute roofing and construction in Cleveland in the amount of $260,980, and then an additional, if needed, $38,830. $38,830.
Okay, so move.
Second discussion.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Or, Mr. Lundee.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
I get two votes at a time.
All the same, see?
There you go.
That's because he took mine last.
I know, I took your one last week. I don't know how that happened.
All right, I think I'm finally done now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Innes.
Well, I guess I'm going to join Jim in picking on the president, you let everybody go before I got, I got a chance to, I did want to congratulate Commander Root and all our, and thank our veterans. You know, I saw the, I think the Community College was taping this, I hope a lot of people saw what we witnessed today.
Right.
You know, we saw from our veterans to two of our communities, Carlisle Township and the Village of Grafton, to our in-service people at Soil and Water, to our mutual aid and 911, to our students at Community College. Yeah, we just saw a great demonstration of what an amazing community we have and the amazing people that make it an amazing community.
Right.
It's, it's incredible to see all that happen in front of us, and as somebody getting long in tooth, I'm comforted with the, the capability and perseverance of, of the young people that are going to be our future, so...
Absolutely.
With that said, I do need an executive session for a couple of pending litigation matters.
There you go, getting us in trouble, Councilor.
Commissioners' report.
Well, after last week's meeting, Commissioner Swede and I attended the ribbon cutting for the Silver Maple Recovery Center at the old soccer academy in Lurain. This facility is absolutely stunning, it's beautiful. There'll be a benefit for people who have private insurance, but we still have a need for people who don't have insurance or are on Medicaid, so that's where Recovery One comes in. And then from there, we attended Chad Snyder's fundraiser at Wolfies, he's running for city council in my ward in Luria. And Friday, I attended the viewing of Wendy Davis, she's a very young, vibrant woman, her mom is Brenda Davis, who sits on city council. She passed away, she also worked for us at Job and Family Services, so my, her thoughts and prayers go out to Brenda Davis and her family, I've known Brenda for 30-some years, so, very nice family. Friday evening, Judy Nedwick had her steak, or her fish fry, which is amazing, really good perch and shrimp. And then Monday, Dan Tellerick had his 30th year fundraiser, and it was the No Joke fundraiser, and it was opening day of the Cleveland Indians, and so they had like hot dogs and Cracker Jack, and the Indians game was playing, and they won, so it was a very good, good fundraiser for Dan Tellerick, he's been around a long time, great guy, so that is the end of my report.
Yes, as was pointed out by Lori, our prayers go out to Brenda Davis and her family with the loss of Wendy, one of our employees here in the county, and quite a loss for the community, and a good family, and Brenda's always been a, a great public servant as well, too, on Luria Council. Our prayers, as we said, Mayor, go out to you and your community and everyone involved, and we're researching, see if there's some ways we might be able to assist you, and we can help you cut through any of the red tape on anything, certainly let us know if we can be of help to you. We obviously want to thank all the firefighters, the volunteers, and the mutual aid firefighters who were there to, to battle that blaze, and so it shows that mutual aid's important and serves a very important role in our community. The Vermillion dumpsters were provided over the weekend, and I know Tom Kelly was there, and they had volunteers in the community show up to help with the cleanup there at the Vermillion River. Also pleased to see that the president's deciding to restore the Great Lakes Restoration funding that was going to go from 300 million to 30 million, we had talked about possibly sending something to DC to point out the importance of that, so we're pleased to see that that funding is going to be restored. Had the opportunity to attend Noakka's Public Transit Human Services Transportation Plan meeting, wish we had had a stronger turnout, but still, they were looking for community feedback on how better to serve the community. As Lori pointed out, excellent fish at Judy Nedwick's event, and I, I gotta tell you, Judy's just an amazing public servant, people love working with her office and working with her, and anytime you need anything in the recorder's office, she's always ready and willing to help out, along with the, the veteran ID cards now that they're making available in the Good Deeds Program.
And they're free.
In the Good Deeds Program. And I was surprised you can talk about Rally to the Rescue.
I know, I just was waiting for you. I missed it, I skipped over, yeah. Saturday, Rally to the Rescue is an annual event at Midway Mall, and all the rescue groups come together, and you can adopt there, just find out more about what the rescues are doing in Lurain County, and they go above and beyond to help animals find new homes, so kudos to everybody involved in that.
Yeah, I just wish we had that many people at the mall every day of the week.
I know, it's packed.
I actually walked in through the parking lot, I almost had two cars hit me, and I thought, geez, who'd ever thought that would happen in the mall parking lot, but a great turnout for that, and thank the folks at WOBL and DLW and working in partnership with them and, and our shelter and everything else, so. Saw that the Senate and the House finally came to terms through conference committee on the gas tax being increased 10.5, 10 and a half cents. Certainly, the infrastructure in the state is very important, the roads and everything, so, and the money can only be used for that, I was upset when I saw a report on the news the other night saying, well, maybe the people in Columbus will use the money for other purposes, and you just can't do that, folks, it's just for the roads and the infrastructure. Also saw another report that said it would take 85 years for the country to finally get up to speed on bringing bridges within compliance across the country, take 85 years to do that, didn't mention what the dollar figure was, but I can only imagine what that would be. And you heard me mention last week about Midview graduate Eric Lauer being the opening day pitcher for the San Diego Padres, we're proud of him, and he actually pitched six scoreless innings in that ballgame, so he, he did a good job, and he's, he's on our, his way, and he's making Lurain County proud. Congratulations to him and his family.
Well, I want to ditto the sentiments of Jerry Innes, he's exactly right, when we can see so many good, good developments happen in just a short period of time, everybody coming together, it kind of plays to what Dr. Ballinger said about having a vitality, a community vitality, and I think this really represents that vitality that we're all eager to see. We also know that it's been in the face of a lot of the disaster this week, or the, some of the unfortunate things, I also echo sentiments about what's the fire in Grafton, but it's, it's good to know that our community can draw together, we can work together, and hopefully that'll be a source of strength moving forward. Same for the Brenda Davis family and the loss of Wendy. Her, her wake on Friday night was a testimony to the life that she must have lived, because it was wall-to-wall. It was wall-to, you could feel the floors kind of moving, so that was, that's heartwarming to see that in, again, in the face of the, the sadness. This past week, I had my first Lurain County Planning Commission meeting, it was not very eventful, but we were there, and I also, on Saturday morning, had the opportunity to travel down to Wellington and sit in for Mayor Schneider's coffee with the mayor meeting, and a lot of good things are happening in Wellington, and I'm surprised we didn't bring it up with our Vietnam vets previously, but they are going to be hosting the Vietnam Travelling Wall, July 11th to 15th, and that's the only city in Ohio where they will make a stop, and it's really interesting, if you have time, to research what goes into bringing that Travelling Wall. They were discussing some of the obstacles, how they will have to have individuals who assemble the wall, actually camp out at the wall, because if any rain were to, to start or any, well, that's the only, hopefully that's the only weather condition we would face, but if it were to rain, the same individuals have to be able to disassemble, reassemble in exactly the same order as...
It can't be wet.
It cannot be wet, which is interesting. They're talking right now and discussing how they're going to manage the traffic, and hopefully we, as the commissioners, will have a role to play in how we can participate in that, that will be a huge event for us in the county. And I believe it's Fran Brooks, who's an auxiliary member, who actually initiated the first talks on that and brought it, brought it full course. I attended the opioid prevention seminar, why prevention matters, on Friday morning, we had our Recovery One planning session, went to the Silver Maple. If anybody thinks that our, our opioid issues are even diminishing a bit, they're, they're really wrong, we're just, we're just rising to that challenge, I think, harder and more forceful, but hopefully people don't get desensitized and overlook what we're, what we're being challenged with. I'm also on the Economic and Industrial Development Committee, and so when I met individuals all day on Saturday who, who said exactly what Commissioner Lundee said, how Midway Mall was full of folks and how well-attended it was, it kind of got me thinking outside the box. We always say, if you build it, they will come. Maybe we need to build from the inside out, because we're never going to be the retail Mecca of the 70s back at Midway Mall, but maybe that was a trigger for more activity to, activities to be sourced inside the mall, where we're drawing individuals in and can expand interest for other businesses and initiatives who would see that activity, kind of like they're doing on the, at the Black River Landing, where they're bringing in thousands of folks on Fridays and often Saturday evening, and now Lurain is seeing a, a growth that's in response to the, the traffic and the, and the population of those events. Perhaps Midway Mall can, can learn from that, and maybe Rally to the Rescue will serve a couple purposes for us. Other than that, that concludes my, my report. I did attend the Noakka Transit Meeting with Commissioner Lundee, and yes, I agree, I wish we had had more folks there, but moving forward, we, you know, we have a lot of things conflicting right now, so maybe we'll see greater interest or, or not so much interest as folks who are going to attend those meetings. And that concludes my report.
Next Wednesday at 2:00, we'll have a Recers Commission meeting, work respondents.
I would move that the reading be waived.
Second discussion.
Mr. Lundee.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sweda. Aye.
Okay, seeing no other business coming for the board at this time, we are going to make the motion to move into executive session based upon the reasons stated by the county administrator and the assistant county prosecutor.
I'll second.
Mr. Lundee.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sweda. Aye.
It's still Wednesday.
Yeah, it is, so, yeah, you're right.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lurain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Luria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.luraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.